I can set that up if you want, real quick.
Sure. What? Oh. No, I think the only one we heard about was the having a chat with the man in rural housing. I don't know, no, 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 no. No, it was, it was just like a non.
Anybody else seen that?
I have not seen that, but it's not allowing Vicky to connect at all. So she's going to be raising her hand tonight or telling how she wants to vote. Yes, you got it? Oh, progress.
Hey, we're working on technology. If anyone's here to speak.
You didn't get any public comment?
No.
If you want to register to speak for your opportunity to public comment, you can do that now.
Yes, I got that.
Oh.
And it's on, it's low.
Oh, yeah.
Can't be a short meeting if we don't start on time. One sec. Okay. Curry, we got them all in? Okay, we're having some difficulty. We may have to do some manual votes tonight. Do you want to give it another?
I'm not, I'm not in. I can, I can do it over.
Sorry, I'll try one more.
Take your time. Okay, we're going to try to get Neil and Vicky back online here.
Oh, I don't know.
Middle of April, we're getting a new system for managing the meetings. So we'll be high-speed, low-drag, middle of May. Okay, we're going to improvise. We'll have, oh. We're going to get started. Hey, we got one. No, it comes on, it comes on. What do you need?
I'm ready.
Okay, we're ready. Good evening, everybody. It is 6:38, March 11, 2025. You are at City Hall, Common Council of the City of Wausau Meeting Council Chambers. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Okay, we have 10 voting members present and one excused.
All right, opportunity for a tie vote tonight. All right, proclamations, I see none in the packet. Pre-registered citizens for public comment for matters appearing on the agenda and other public comment. We have two tonight. Up first is Tracy Schlegel.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Schlegel. I'm the Executive Director of NAMI Northwoods, the local affiliate of the National Alliance on Mental Illness that serves Marathon, Lincoln, and Langley Counties. Excuse me. We are an affiliate of NAMI, but we are our own 501(c)(3). The NAMI Northwoods office is located inside Grace United Church of Christ, 535 South Third Ave in Wausau. I'm here tonight to ask you to please renew your objections to Medicaid cuts. Medicaid is vital, life-saving health care. At the beginning of 2018, I was incapacitated by the severity of symptoms of mental illness. I couldn't leave my home. I couldn't drive. I couldn't work. In the fall of 2019, I was starting to lose hope and became suicidal. Fortunately, I have self-awareness and support, which not everyone who lives with mental illness has, and I knew I was in trouble. I asked my boyfriend, now husband, to lock my medications in his safe. I did everything I could to not be alone. There was no room for me at the crisis center when I called for help. My psychiatrist at the time found me an inpatient placement in northern Wisconsin, where I stayed for 17 days and received eight electroconvulsive treatments, ECT, or electric shock. If I hadn't had Badger Care, which receives 60% of its funding from Medicaid, I don't know that I would be alive today, tonight, speaking to you. If I hadn't had Badger Care, I don't know that I would have been able to receive the treatment I needed. If I was able to get that treatment without insurance, I would be buried underneath a mountain of medical debt today that I would probably never get out from under. It took nearly four and a half years until I was well enough to even consider getting a job. I started by volunteering with NAMI Northwoods, and the rest, as they say, is history. I share this with you because if I was as ill now as I was then, I wouldn't be aware of the political climate and that health care as I know it is in jeopardy. I would want someone to speak up for me and for others who are also very sick. I would want someone to share with you that 1 in 3 people who live with mental illness are enrolled in Medicaid. I would want someone to share with you that more than $250 million came into Marathon County from Medicaid in 2023. Without Medicaid, how will our families, friends, neighbors, and fellow citizens still get the care in Wausau and Marathon County that they need? Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story. Up next is Paula Meadows.
Hello. I'm Paula Meadows. I live at 1302 Madison Street here in Wausau. I am a homeowner, taxpayer, resident, and a veteran. I was just wondering a few things while I was sitting, waiting for this council to begin. And we all have our own opinions, but I don't think that's really your place is to have opinions, is that you need to do what the constituents in your districts ask you to do. And I wonder what it takes. Does it take one person contacting you for you to change your mind? Does it take five? Does it take 10? Does it take more, and then you still don't change your mind, even if your constituents don't want you to vote or want you to vote a certain way? I'm just wondering how many it takes. First off, I totally agree with Mayor Denny and his vetoing the resolution. The reason I do is that when you approach a federal government, I don't believe anything from this area, this level, will be done. It'll get filed in a Chapter 13, in a File 13. For those of you that haven't heard that, that is a military term. That means a garbage can. If you truly want to do something about this, I ask that you petition the governor. I'm trying to remain calm. I am calm, I'm just trying to breathe. It's the governor who is holding over $4 billion of our taxpayer money. Now, he may be, and I don't know, holding this money to find out what the federal government is going to do and then release it amongst the counties, the cities that are in need if Medicare is cut. But we do understand, and if you've been paying attention, that there is waste, fraud, and theft in all levels of government, and I would expect that there is even some here. And that I appreciate the fact that our federal government is trying to get a handle on it. That there is now a trillion dollars in interest that has to be paid out of a $4 trillion. It's 25%. What is the interest that even Wausau is paying on its own budget? I am not sure. I'm going to look into it. But I just appreciate the fact that the mayor has vetoed this, and I hope when you consider this, that not all the Wisconsin residents. Do we understand Medicare is necessary? I do. Do I understand that there is fraud out there? I do. Wisconsin needs, and I hope Governor Evers is looking at his level of the Wisconsin Medicaid programs, so that those that don't deserve it, don't need it, aren't alive, aren't receiving it. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for public comment. All right, up next is the mayor's statement on strategic plan. I was going to give a presentation on this, but I, we've got a little ways to go yet on it, but I am going to make a statement that, you know, this is, this is a plan that, something I agreed with Mayor Rosenberg on when, when she was running, that we need a strategic plan because a strategic plan sets the tone, strategic plan sets the tactics, sets the work effort that staff does, it puts staff on the right tasks. And so I'm going to ask you to review this, and we're, we're going to be looking at it in the coming months as our resolution from '23 asks us to. It set out a lot of goals. It set out a lot of measurables. We haven't measured any of those yet, as far as I can tell. We're going to take a look at whether we should be. We're going to take a look at whether we still need them, and we're going to look at, do we still mean what we said when, when most of this body passed this in '23? And including in that would be, well, I'll just, in, in this plan, we talk about the Rivers Edge Trail. Is that still a priority? I think it is. We talk about strong regional alliances. We have a pretty decent deal these days going with CVB. We've just cut a deal with the county on homelessness. We're saying we're going to be an age-friendlyer, friendly community. So, social participation is important, and one of the items specifically called out in social participation is to continue to support the Landing Senior Center at the Woodson YMCA, senior-focused services and amenities. It took Brian Bailey to come up here and point it out that that was in this plan. So we're going to dust it off and look at it. If there's something in here that we're not looking at, we have our, we had our council retreat, or you did, in, in April of '24. It was a goal-setting meeting. One of the items that came out of that was homelessness. It was one of your priorities that, that was stated. The budget was a priority, and getting along and working together, believe it or not, was a priority, if you recall. Some of you weren't there, but for those who, who were, you could pass that along. What came out of that planning session? We forgot to write it down and incorporate it into a plan, but we did eventually have a committee of the whole. We talked with the county. We set up a task force. We have a deal now for, for potential 365 shelter. That came out of that original plan that I believe it was Alder Giselman and Killian who asked to have that committee of the whole. I think everybody was in agreement. They were the first at the trough, but we got it done, and I thank you for that. So stand by for more to come on a strategic plan. Up next is the consent agenda, and I understand we may have, somebody wanted one item polled?
250309. It was requested to be polled by Elder Watson.
Okay, so I have a motion from Watson, second by Neil. This is the consent agenda excluding.
25 dash 0309.
All right, any comments?
You may begin voting. Get out.
Okay.
Motion passes 10 to 0.
Okay, so we'll take that, that item that we polled. That was 18 or 9, or 309. Is the resolution endorsing Fair Housing Month events in April 2025 would entertain a motion? There we have it up there? Oh, I'm not seeing it here. Okay, Alder Lukens with a motion. Looking for a second. It's broken. I'll take a voice second. We'll fill it in. All right, second from Watson. All right, Alder Watson.
Sorry, I'm trying to get sign back in. It wasn't working. Okay, there, sweet. So I pulled this item from the consent agenda, even though I know it passed ED 5 to 0, and I appreciate those folks on economic development for talking about this, but I just wanted to sort of give it its airtime for publicity reasons, right? So it's not just another light item. We're really just committed to showing that we're really wanting to work for fair and equitable housing in the city of Wausau. So the Affordable Housing Task Force, along with the Development Department, worked to figure out some events for the month of April because April is Fair Housing Month. So we're going to have some educational events plus, plus some community events, really just to bring awareness to that mission. So some of the educational events that are going on is there's going to be a Fair Housing documentary and panel discussion, which should be really cool to sort of understand a little bit about, like, what housing discrimination looks like, and then we're going to have a panel of experts from the city that are going to be there, which is awesome. And then there's some workshops with our Fair Housing Council in Wisconsin, as well as Judicare Partners, which will be helpful in learning a bit more about, like, what's your rights as a tenant, as a homeowner, that kind of thing. And then my favorite is the poster contest for kiddos. So anybody like K-12 can submit a poster for a theme, and you can find that submission page on our website. And there's going to be an award ceremony with some awesome judges, a really cool person giving out awards, but we've got some swags, gift cards, and stuff, so don't think that your art will go unnoticed. We will celebrate your art and choose some winners. So I would just encourage residents, businesses, organizations to take part in these activities. I would welcome all council members to attend, if you could attend or spread the word at least. And it's just to, to have some, I guess, talk about what fair housing is and what it means. And so that's why I pulled the agenda item, so just keep your eyes peeled. April is going to be a fun month for fair housing.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to second that. I wanted to thank the city's Affordable Housing Task Force and the Community Development Department for the work put into this. I think it's really exciting. I'm glad that it's being highlighted. It's an extremely important topic, and I do hope that we have lots in attendance. So thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Anyone not being able to buzz in? All right, seeing none?
You may begin voting.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion that passes 10 to 0.
That brings us to resolutions and ordinances. Mayor's appointments, there are none tonight. Next up is File 25 dash 0214, Public Health and Safety. This is a return of the vetoed resolution expressing opposition to any proposed federal or state cuts to Medicaid that was approved. 10, 0, one abstention, vetoed on 3, 3, 25. Would entertain a motion. Motion from Rasmussen, second from Watson. Just a quick statement, I'm not opposed to Medicaid. I'm not opposed to Medicaid. So, you know, we've had, this is my vote. I, I feel that we need to stick to city business, and that was the point of my vote. Talk about what our plan is. We have a lot of things we can do, and we have to get going on. We had a recent vote where we had a 1 to 10 vote on a, on a housing project where Alder Henke was the lone vote. We had another vote on the budget. We had 10 to 1. So sometimes a person stands alone in a vote. I only vote when there's a tie. I've done that once. This is my second veto, so it's part of the process. You know, I don't, I don't, I'm not, wasn't here to upset anybody's apple cart, but let's stick to the city business. That's my point. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I think it's important, though, to recognize that there are times when municipalities do need to speak up to the upper levels of government. You'll recall that on many, many occasions, the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, of which we are a member, often will issue, when legislation is afoot that affects municipalities and their budgets, they'll issue a call to action, and they will often provide us with template resolutions that communities across the state can pass and send along to their elected representatives at the state and federal level to communicate those opinions. And the resolution that we passed in and of itself was not partisan. It basically outlined the fact that 23% of our community relies on Medicaid. Decisions that come from the state and federal level absolutely affect our operations and our budgets directly. We cannot have people not getting care. We can't have people not being allowed to stay in nursing homes because they're not getting benefits. We can't have pressure on public safety services because people aren't getting the care that they need, and then those behaviors are materializing in other manners. So that is the primary reason that we were interested in this in the first place, is it really does have a direct local impact, and it really was not some lofty aspirational goal where we didn't have a stake in the outcome. We have a clear stake in the outcome, both from a logistical standpoint in our departments and from a functional standpoint in the services that we fund locally with our taxpayer dollars. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to echo what Alder Rasmussen just got done saying. And another thing, too, is, you know, when I, if, if, if when you vetoed this, if there would, if you would have had some kind of proposal to say, that's okay, I have, I have something covered. If, if, in the event that the government should take away our citizens' Medicaid, if you would have had something in there, I'd say, well, let's take a look at it. But I, I just can't, I can't, you know, granted, this is only a message, you know, and I, and I do believe that this is city business because when it affects our citizens, who, we're, we're the, we're the bottom level of the government here, you know, who's going to, we're the bottom level here. Who's, you know, if we don't say something, who is? I, if you'd, if there would have been an alternate plan to say, well, that's okay, if they get rid of Medicaid in the event, I'd certainly look at it, but I can't turn my back on, on the citizens of District 10 that depend on Medicaid. And, and I do believe that, that this is a city. This is a city. It's, it's not only a city, it's national, and it starts with us. And the citizens of District 10 will not be supporting the video, or the veto. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to ask Attorney Jacobson if she would clarify what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, so we know exactly if we're in support or...
Caitlin, did you want to do that, or do you want me to do it?
You can take it.
Okay.
We vote in the affirmative.
Right, so if it says expressing opposition, last time, I think you voted against it, too, didn't you? Approve, I mean, voted no?
No, they voted for it, so you would.
If you want it. Yep, and then no if you don't want to express opposition.
It's the same as the, the original vote. So you would be voting for it or against it. You voted last time, as a reminder, 10 to 0, one abstention. Alder Tierney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What I wanted to expand on Alder Rasmussen's statements. I do, too, believe that this is a city issue. There are children on Medicaid where if they weren't on Medicaid, would the parents be able to take them in for vaccines? If they did not have insurance coverage through Medicaid, they might not go in for those well-child visits. They might not go in for those vaccines, and if they don't have those vaccines, that would clearly affect our community because this child goes to school, and if they have mumps or measles, that affects the entire school. There are pregnant women that would not go in for their will, for their examinations because they may not be able to afford it, and they might not be able to see that there could be a problem pertaining to their health or the health of the baby that could be addressed before that child is born, where it could be a medication thing. It could be putting them on bedrest, what have you. That affects our community. It affects our community when people are not getting the help that they need, whether it be physical or mental, because they're left to choosing when they can go to the doctor, how bad they have to be before they go to the doctor. This would increase the number of people who are going to our emergency room because they wait until it's a true emergency, because they don't go in for visits. This would already put the emergency room situation that we have in the Wausau area, which is not good. People have expressed that there are very long waits when they go to the ER, but you put that uninsured population that could have addressed it if they had Badger Care with their family doctor going to the walk-in, and that would, that would clearly be a hardship to our city to add all of those additional people going to the emergency room because they waited, because they didn't go into their family doctor, because they didn't have the insurance coverage. So I think that the residents of our city, I think the council members who represent those residents, I think our city has a clear stake in keeping Badger Care available to those who are in need of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you. As Alder Tierney so very well stated, I, I agree. The examples that Alder Tierney just listed, I just thought were so well put, and I agree with Alder Larson and Rasmussen, and again, thank Alder Watson for bringing this forward. You know, we, I work with children, and children, you know, while, while citizens can... I work with children. And children, you know, while, while citizens can speak to their representatives, children can't. And maybe their parents can. But, there are a lot of children who can't. And, you know, I think that we also, for me, even if it's, if it's one person, and we heard that very personal story tonight, and, you know, saving a life, that's important. So, the, the, I do believe that it's important for our representatives to hear from us. That is our job, to speak, to represent the, the people in our districts. And I've heard from a number of people in my district who are very much in support of this. So, I guess I just, one more time, want to clarify, because I know that Alder Killian asked, so, a yes vote to this would be yes in favor of the resolution?
Correct.
Not the video, the veto, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I will be voting, again, in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
Thank you. I too believe that it's city business. And I believe the City Council, as well as the mayor, last month, agreed to a resolution that the City Council supports funding renewal for the Knowles Nelson Stewardship Program, and that we forwarded that resolution onward to state and federal, state officials. So, it is the business of our, of our city. And the mayor agrees that, that at times it is. And I, it sort of saddens me in a way that this has become a partisan issue. But, a little bit about lanes. My lane on the Fifth District moves from Stark Street all the way up to Park. And I know I have a lot of seniors. I have a living, a senior center, a senior living center, an assisted living center, and another, more intensive care facility. So, I trust that within my district, there are Medicaid people, people that need Medicaid. And I, and I support, I support the resolution. And I, I know that Medicaid, whether it be Medicaid, Medicare, Social Security, Badger Care, are all instruments of helping the, the people of my district. And I, I would think that that is something that I should support. And I'll, and I thank Alder Person Watson, again, for that resolution. I think that's an important, that we send on to our state legislators and federal legislators, the need for Medicaid. And I, again, say, I regret that this has been made a partisan issue. I think that this is, I don't know the party affiliations of the City Council, and it's not in my business. But, I think we try to navigate the world that our citizens and our constituents live in. And I think that we tried the best we can to, to do that, putting aside political, political motivation or advantage. And I, so again, will support the, this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Tierney.
Thank you. I just had one thing to add to my original comments. Medicaid, Badger Care is not just servicing people who are of lower income. It also services the disabled. People who can't get a job that offers insurance, because they are either mentally or physically unable to do the job requirements. And without Medicaid, they would not have the services that they need, such as assisted living or nursing homes. They would not have the medical care, because they can't get insurance through a job that they can't do. And, so, it's, we're not just talking about lower income people. We're not just talking about people who have access to Medicare, but still qualify for Medicaid. We're talking about people who cannot get healthcare coverage any other way, because their disabilities do not allow them to work. And that is people within our city, too, which, again, would put a strain on, on all of our medical services. So, we can't forget about the disabled people that really have no other alternative than Medicaid for healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Larson.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank Alder Watson for bringing this to the front, because, you know, there, there is a threat, I mean, of this. If, if there wasn't a threat, this wouldn't be here. I mean, people thought that Roe versus Wade wouldn't be overturned either, and look where that is today. Medicare is, is, you know, we've heard from our federal government, Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security, all could be on a chopping block. And if we don't start from the city on up, voicing our, our discontent on this, and, and sticking up for our citizens, well, then we might as well just fold. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to zero with one abstention.
The council has spoken. Thank you. Up next, we're going to suspend the rules, Rule Number Six B filing and/or Twelve A for referral of resolutions. This requires a two-thirds vote. Motion from Watson, second from Neil.
You may begin voting. Motion passes ten to zero.
So, first file under that suspension is two five dash zero three zero four, Council Rule, let's see, this is a ordinance amending Section 10.20.080 subsection A, designating no parking on the east side of North Sixth Avenue, beginning at the intersection of Qua Street and extending 12 feet south. I have a motion from Watson, second from Neil. Seeing no.
You may begin voting.
We've got a yes from Tierney.
Yeah, okay. Motion passes ten to zero.
Next item is two five dash zero three zero five. It's Council Resolution approving Ethics Board Rule on recusal. Actually, that should it be, shouldn't that status came from the, from the Ethics Board?
The Ethics Board isn't a standing committee?
Okay. So, it's a non-standing committee. So, we have the recusal rules in your packet. Motion from Lukens, second from Watson. Comments, concerns? Seeing none?
You may begin voting.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to one.
And the final resolution is going to be pulled. That's the latter two truck. That one is not ready to go yet. Public comment and suggestions? Anyone who missed a shot earlier? Killian in his car, yes, ma'am.
Again, Lisa Rasmussen mentioned that there is a League of Municipalities, which was really interesting to hear about. And, I don't know if that's personal, or if that's just like the Wausau City Council would be a part of that, and then would group that as a council, and as a league going to the state and federal level. I thought that was interesting. Again, we care about, I care about Medicaid and the people that are on Medicaid. And I do believe that, on a city level, if you truly wish to help, you would work on getting the debt down. Second, how interesting that Lou Larson would comment that the constituents of his district, of which I am part of, agree with this, and he was voting in agreement, when I do not agree with it. So, just so it's on the record, I find that disheartening, because not all the individuals of District 10 agree. Again, I guess it doesn't take one person to disagree with something for your Alder person to vote how they choose. This is a city issue, but the city issue is not at a point where it can offer any assistance to anybody who in need may lose any Medicaid assistance. It is not necessarily a partisan issue that has been brought up by Alder Person Gisselman, but it is an issue that is coming, an issue of fraud, and we should be concerned in waste and theft. And it is, I believe, an issue that Medicaid, most importantly, services the lower income. It does service, because if you make too much money, you don't get the services, because you make too much money. I actually received a call to offer me services as a retired person, but I have a 401 retirement plan, and I am not eligible. They didn't care how much I had in it, the fact that I have a fund. So, I was not eligible for anything. Could use some help with groceries. So, I just wanted to make a couple of points that I disagree with. And again, you guys all have opinions. We all do. Oh, for those of you that may be feeling fear and trepidation, I am so sorry that you go through that. I am so sorry that there is name-calling, and that you feel that your personal lives may be in danger, and that some of you, as has been expressed to me in the past, have had damage. And I'm so sorry that that is happening here. And just to understand that people feel strongly about situations, we would like our Alder persons to be voting their way, or we would just want our way, maybe.
Thank you. Would entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion from Lukens, second from Tierney. All in favor?
Aye.
See you later.
Oof.
I anticipated a short meeting.
I, I...